All right, everyone, I don't, I do not have a response for Mr. Pappas, so we'll just wait and see if he, if he logs on later. We are going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Let the September 2020 Brookhaven Borough Council Meeting come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
On Pledge of Allegiance, United States of America, the Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor?
As always, it's unfortunate that-
Let me add, this is your last official council meeting. You will have, we will have this, we will have you for the September Council Workshop.
You most certainly will.
For your years of service, you will be missed, and one more, one more meeting until you, until your parole starts.
Well, first of all, let me take, let me take a moment of silence for the recently deceased Eleanor McCanney, Dolores Trevator, Al of Baton, Bateman, Catherine Wooden, Michael Rubelo, Anthony Seaman Jr., John Fuchs, Councilwoman Fuchs's husband. May they rest in peace.
Go right into the first public discussion session. Is there anybody from public discussion?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wilbert, give us a roll call.
Oh, thank you very much. Mr. Heller, are you here?
Present.
Mrs. Fuchs?
Here.
Mrs. Heller? Miss Leslie?
Is absent.
Okay, Miss Leslie? Denise?
Uh-oh.
No Denise?
I thought I saw her.
She's on mute. You're on mute Denise.
Don't worry, I'm here.
I saw her.
Who, who was that that just said?
This is Miss Leslie.
Denise, okay.
Here, John.
Okay, Mr. Vasquez?
Present.
Miss Suiki?
Present.
Mr. Pappas? Mayor Hess?
Present.
Mr. Wills?
Present.
Mr. Catania? Chief Montella?
Present.
Chief Zebly? John Zebly?
Present.
Did you say president?
I think he said president.
Yeah, I can see his lips move.
Thank you very much.
He said president, I could hear him. Hey, great job, John, I'll do it next month, okay? Is there, is there anyone for public discussion?
Yes, there is, Mr. Heller, Councilman Heller.
Mr. DePlicky?
Yes.
Name your name and address, please.
Hi, David DePlicky, 512 Trimble Boulevard. Want to say hi to everyone? So, again, I'm leaving update, you know, about the upcoming election. I've been doing my part of my end to get things rolling here. So, again, I want to address council, see if there's any kind of advertising you can do from the borough standpoint. What I've noticed is I have spoken to the, the gentleman in Chester at the warehouse that distributes all the polling equipment to all the precincts. And you know, council already had their vote to go back to normal polling locations for the general election in November. I got a call from one of my people on my team and other people, that your voter registration still shows Coburn Elementary as the polling location. I called, his name is Jim Savage over at the polling, polling warehouse, and he assured me that they had Brookhaven documented as going back to the regular locations. And he said, "The system is updating," always blaming the system. But I will keep up on top of them, I will keep checking my, my voter registration periodically to see if it does get updated. But I was wondering if, you know, the borough could maybe put on the borough sign out there across from Burger King that polling is going back to their normal locations, and even list if you can where the first precinct at Borough Hall, second at Charity, third at Real Church, four, five, and six at Borough Hall, to some style, put a, you know, you know, announcement on that board that's saying everything's back to normal, because I'm sure other voters are going to see that it's still saying Coburn.
We'll, we'll put it on the, we can, Mrs. Fuchs can put it on the website, and, and we can, Mrs. Fuchs and myself can put it on all the, all the borough-
Social media pages?
All the, yeah, the official and unofficial Facebook pages tonight, actually, Dave. Thanks for that.
Do you guys have any control over that TV channel? What's it, Channel 11 or something, the local channel?
Mr. Wilbert? Mr. Wilbert's muted. Where did he go?
Hold on.
Mr. Wilbert can, can speak to that.
Oh, I wanted to, I wanted to speak on it, because I've been talking for the last month or so, or two months, about having it at the municipal center at one place. I don't think the churches want us back because of COVID.
They do.
We can't, I talked, we can put four people, four precincts in the, in the gym, and two where they normally are. And I think it'd be easier, we have massive parking here, it'll be in one place, in two different rooms, we can control it better, and not be running around in case-
It's going to be very, Janice, sorry to interrupt, but it's going to be very hard to social distance, all those protocols are going to be in place again. This election is going to be a lot more crowded than the primary was.
Yeah, it was, there was not social distancing in the gym, it was a mad ass, it was so many people gathered together, it was awful.
Well, that's why I still think, you know, if you can limit the amount of polling locations in one area, it would help. You know, obviously, at Charity and Real Church, we will be able to separate better than you can at the borough.
The last charity or the other church, I don't think they want us there.
I've spoken to Pastor Bennett, Real Church, he's on board, and I already got clearance from Our Lady of Charity, Father Lyons, that they're, well, they're okay with using their-
Janice, no one, no one has a problem with going back to quote-unquote "normal," the normal polling station. And I think it's safer that way, I mean, you're a little more spread out, you don't want to consolidate.
That's exactly right, you'll be more spread out. There'll be a lot more people out voting for this election than in the primary.
Yeah, it's going to be a big one. It's going to be a really big one.
Certainly. So, that's why I want to bring up, and any help, you know, if you want to advertise, well, is we, I think we should be able to find another, say, eight to 10 more poll workers should be sufficient to man all the polls. I'm meeting with my team on Monday, and so I have a clearer idea where we are manning most of the polls. One thing I want to address is Councilwoman Leslie, your mother is still listed as the judge over at Charity, I don't know what your mother's situation is, I hope she's doing well. Could you address your mother, or do we need to replace her?
I will check with her, she is doing a lot better, but I will check with her to see if she's still interested in that.
She's been doing a great job over there for years, and I don't want to impose, but I just, you know, give me a heads up, where, that way I know what to try to work around for Our Lady of Charity.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Leslie. That's what I needed to address, anything you guys can do to help out finding people, volunteers to man all the polls, as usual, the six precincts always going to need help. I will check with the other judge of elections listed and make sure they're on board, and, and, you know, hopefully, it's not a too bad of a problem getting the additional workers needed.
Dave, if I can get off of work, I will work inside of a pole this year.
Sure.
Yeah, if I can get off work, I will, yep.
All right, just let me go, and, you know, we'll find, we'll slot you in for sure, thank you, Donna.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, council, and, you know, I'll keep updates coming as I see fit to what's set about, let you guys know what's going on.
Thanks, Dave, thanks for all your hard work, I know it's not easy.
Yeah, well, anyway, I'll get back to you guys, let you know what's going on.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public discussion?
Yes, good afternoon.
Yeah.
Hello?
Who spoke first?
My name is-
The gentleman, the gentleman in the Philly shirt may go first, please state your, state your name and address.
Oh, yes, good, good evening, my name is Jason Bush, my wife Margie is here with me as well, 406 Trimble.
Go ahead, sir.
On August 4th, we had the storm roll through AISA, and as a result, we had sewage back up in our house.
Okay.
I had sent you a letter, emailed you a letter, I'm not sure if you received it?
I received it, I did not have time to reply.
Okay.
It's on my long list.
As, as I'm aware, I just wanted to reach out to the council to find out if there was anything that they could do for us to expedite this. Right now, we're living out of one room in our house, because as a result of that storm, it blew sewage throughout the whole downstairs, and they had to replace all of our flooring, removed it, removed all the flooring, I'm sorry, and had to clean and sanitize. So, we're waiting for the, your insurance company to get back to us.
With it, with a denial letter?
Well, our denial letter was sent to your insurance company.
Okay.
Our insurance company. Your plumber, Bob Grant, had come out and inspected it, and told us that it was the borough's issue as a result.
The, the backflow preventer failed.
Yes.
Failed, failed.
Failed miserably.
Yeah.
So, we are looking to have this resolved as soon as possible, so we can get on with our lives.
Okay, do me a favor, email me your phone number, if you didn't already put it in the email, I don't, I don't recall seeing a phone number, and I will call you after this meeting. I'll talk to Mrs. Wiki and Mr. Wilbert about it, and we will get on it first thing.
Okay, the phone number is actually-
Email me your phone number, though.
Absolutely. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Thank you, bye-bye now.
And I know we had someone else for public discussion, go ahead.
Yeah, if I could, going down a way, 3713 John Dry. If I could just take a few minutes and ask the council to indulge me. With the mayor leaving, right before this meeting, I sat down and I jotted some things down that has happened over his time here. And though the mayor and I may have had some problems along the way throughout the years, he did a lot of good things. And I wanted to point them out this evening. Family Day didn't exist. And I remember shortly after Mike becoming a council member, a whole, the, the whole record walked out on him, so we literally restructured everything from scratch.
I wish I was that lucky.
It was things that we, Family Day was one of those things that we ushered in, back when the Jets were doing the cook-in over some open fires, and you know, people were playing volleyball, wiffle ball, it was more like being in your uncle's backyard on the Fourth of July. As a matter of fact, we did those things in the summertime, and Mike was a part of getting that started. We took a boy's baseball field, and we turned it into a girl's softball field, that had never existed before, and I can't even remember, a council member, I won't say who that person is, long gone, sat at the council table, and he said, and I quote, "Why? They're just girls," unquote. Well, we pushed forward anyway, and today, that organization thrives pretty good, because we gave them a place to play, and Mike was a part of that. The new municipal building was probably one of the hardest things that we ever did, because nobody was for it. Everybody thought that their taxes were going to go up, and they'd beat us up. We had so many people come out to those meetings that we literally had to, Coburn School was good enough to open up their doors, so that, because the old Borough Hall would not take the overload of people that were coming to those meetings. And we pushed ahead, and, and, and because of it, we were able to, you know, Janice Suiki sat down, and she, she worked out a long-term plan with the bank, so that we didn't hurt people too bad, because taxes was foremost on their mind, and we opened up a lot of doors that we would have never been able to open under the old, under the old building, and, including basketball, they didn't have a home. And they've been able to thrive. You know, he wasn't in the origin to the parade committee, but we had a council at the time that didn't want us to have it for him. And we forged ahead, and Mike's been there with us ever since. Early on, he's been the announcer, and I don't remember times that he didn't announce. If it was in the early days, I don't recall it at this point. Garcia Park wasn't there, and we put Garcia Park in place. And, you know, but I think the tough part about that was keeping it from his predecessor, that we were actually going to name the park after him. Like I remember Carol saying at the time, that was the most speechless that she ever remembers Ralph being, when we surprised him at the dedication and pulled the sign down, and the park was named after him. And, you know, with people like Steve Olongo and the people that were helping us at the time, the mayor is very much part of that, and I think people ought to know that. I can remember when we tried to revitalize the storefronts in a recession, you know, the big shopping centers weren't there, and we, you know, we even got cooperation from the shopping center, the Brookhaven Shopping Center, when they put the new facade on, AMF and the old Texaco Station and all participated in that, that was tough, when we went out with Maurice Marcus, and actually visited all those businesses, and the owners and the managers. And Mike was part of that. So, I think you ought to get credit for some of the good things, that was when he was a councilman, before he was a mayor. And he's leaving after a long service, and I just wanted to, you know, I was there with, through a lot of the things that I just talked about. And, you know, one of the things that we were able to, one of the things I think you have to be able to do, is take all the capitalized out of teamwork, and that's what made it happen, we all came together and made those things happen. So, I just wanted to thank him for his service, and wish him well, and wish his family well as they go forward. So-
Thank you, thank you for the kind words.
For allowing me to, to go through that, I'm sorry?
I said, "Thank you for the kind words, Vaughn, that's very nice of you," thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, Mike. But, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vaughn. Is there anyone else for public discussion? If so, please unmute yourself. Going once, going twice. All right, the first public discussion session is closed. Mr. Wills, give us the solicitor's report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First item on my agenda concerns 3607 Victor Avenue. Last month, the borough had contracted with a local clean-out company to remove all the trash, junk, and debris, discarded items in the property. Earlier this month, I have filed a municipal lien for nuisance abatement with the Delaware County Court to recoup the borough's costs for the trash removal project. Second item concerned Brookhaven Storage.
Jay, let me, Jay, let me interject that we are not done with that, that issue just yet.
Okay.
The public and those affected should know, we are not done, there are more steps to take, I'm talking to the property owner. And we're going to try and get it done the easy way, just to let everyone know. So, sorry, sorry to interject.
If, if necessary, the borough can certainly authorize, under the court order, for a cleanup, if that is deemed necessary by Borough Council. Second issue was Brookhaven Storage. Again, we are presently waiting submission of the final reverse subdivision and land development plans for execution by borough officials, and then recording of those plans at the Delaware County Courthouse. Recently, the developer has reimbursed the borough for the sum of $3,245. They were for outstanding professional fees incurred by the borough in reviewing the reverse subdivision and land development application. Next issue concerns Carmans, again, we're all familiar with this property on Edgemont Avenue. That is under an agreement of sale and is scheduled for closing later this month. At the time of closing, I will, in all likelihood, be attending that closing, and at that time, the borough will be recouping all the fees and costs it has accrued to date as a result of that particular process.
And we still do not know the intent for the use of the property, correct?
Well, again, it must be, at this point, in compliance with the current zoning ordinance for Edgemont Avenue Business Corridor, unless the property owner would attempt to seek zoning variance, but I'm not aware of any of that information at this point.
It's got to be better than a vacant building, whatever.
Yes. Next issue concerned the Pando Property Group, they are developing seven single-family residential homes off Brookhaven Road. I've consulted with the borough engineer, and he has made two recommendations with regard to a partial release of escrow funds for certain public improvements that have commenced. And therefore, I have for Borough Council's consideration, two different resolutions. One resolution would release the sum of $44,440. Again, that has been approved and recommended by the borough engineer. Therefore, if it is Borough Council's pleasure, a motion would be in order to adopt this particular resolution.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jack.
Second resolution, again, the engineer Catania had provided a supplemental recommendation to Borough Council as well for a secondary or supplemental release of escrow for public improvements in the amount of $22,374. And again, if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion
Yes, sir.
to approve that resolution.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Need to have a resolution for it.
Please do. You're muted, Janice. Go ahead, Jay.
That resolution was forwarded to Borough Council early this morning. Next issue concerns the present zoning hearing board applications, instruction, and fee schedule. Again, last month, I had reviewed the existing zoning hearing board application fee schedule. I have drafted a new zoning hearing board application, instruction materials, and fee schedule that I think comports with the present zoning ordinance and the Pennsylvania municipalities planning code. I have drafted a new resolution which would adopt a new fee schedule for applications for variance, special exceptions, and other relief. I have reviewed the current fee schedule, that is part of our Brookhaven Borough Code. That fee schedule does not properly compensate the borough for the cost expended in processing the application. Therefore, I would suggest that it is Borough Council's pleasure that we adopt this resolution that modifies the present zoning hearing board fee schedule.
Anyone have any questions about it? Anyone from council, that is? If so, unmute yourself. I think you all had ample time to review it. So, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried, thank you, Jack.
Next issue concerned the property at 701 Marshall Road. Again, this was a property that had been plagued with some chronic property maintenance issues. And the borough contracted with Pro Cleanout, that were authorized to perform certain property maintenance and property landscaping issues. That has been resolved, and I'm pleased to advise that the property owner has recently reimbursed the borough that the borough incurred in those cleanup services for that particular property.
Jay, I had a quick question on that. Did we also clean up the backyard?
We did, we did not, we would need, Jay, we, we would need a court order to do so, correct?
Okay.
And I also, I also spoke to that property owner, so we're going to attempt to get it done, we won't give it too much time, considering the length of time that the issue has existed. So, if we have to go the same route as we did for the Victor property, we shall do so, if Jay would want to add anything to that.
My understanding that, that the rear yard is a fully enclosed, it's a fenced rear yard, though there's some extra privacy and personal property protections that the homeowner has with regard to that rear yard. So, I believe we are in communication with the property owner to see if we can convince the property owner to voluntarily bring the property into compliance. It's my understanding, if those communications do not bear fruit, that Borough Council may wish to authorize me to take additional steps in the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas, which I would be prepared to do at the behest of Borough Council.
I'll, I'll give it, I'll give it one week from today, before we proceed on that. What, that's all we can give it, it's been too long. I'll give it seven more days before we, we ask that you do so.
Okay.
Unless anyone from council objects, I think another seven days is, is fair enough. Mr. Leslie, unmute yourself.
In fact, I'm not on council, but I'm object, I'll object. My property is adjacent to him, I would start the process tomorrow. It's been that way for the last 10 years, the neighbors were here last meeting complaining about the flies, and the feces in the backyard, it's a mess, don't wait a week, that's just me.
Okay, well, I'm going to, I'm going to wait a week, I understand your ire, but I'm going to wait one more week, it's seven days, it's not, not going to kill anyone to wait seven days when it's going on. And, and I spoke to the gentleman once, I'm not convinced either way, but allow me seven days, that's all I'm asking for, and I don't see anyone from council objecting, so. But Jay, next Monday, if I don't, if I don't get what I want, and what council wants, and Mr. Leslie, and the other neighbors want, we will go ahead and bring the hammer down.
Well, I am pleased to tackle these property maintenance issues, I know for some of these properties that have been chronic and longstanding, and I know Borough Council has certainly made it a top priority that we go after these particular property owners and bring them into compliance.
Sure.
They clearly go to quality of life issues for everyone in the borough.
Sure, and there's, and there's, there's a list, there's a, there's a, there's a, definitely a list of about 10 that I have, so, you know, one at a time, I guess.
Yeah, the, the last item I have on my agenda concerns the ballot drop box license agreement. Now, the Delaware County Bureau of Elections has recently been in touch with the borough. They are requesting that we have a secure ballot drop box installed either immediately outside or inside the municipal building to ensure that voters have their ballots received and tabulated by the Election Bureau in a timely fashion. The Delaware County Bureau of Elections is requesting that the borough enter into a ballot drop box license agreement to authorize the installation of the box, again, whether it be immediately inside or outside the municipal building. And so, if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order to approve and execute the ballot drop box license agreement with the Delaware County Bureau of Elections.
Now, Jay, now, Mr. Wills, this would be installed for a period of five years, am I, am I correct? Or, or is, is there a timeframe on it?
I'm not so sure, there's I have it here.
I may have gotten bad information, I heard that the other day, it was the first time I heard.
Basically, there's a termination clause that provides that either party has the right to terminate this license agreement within 30 days' written notice to the other party.
At any time?
Yeah, so, there's a firm, you know, period. There's some flexibility, obviously, to the borough, and also to the Delaware County Election Bureau. But as we are all familiar with some of the issues affecting the United States Postal Service today, the Delaware County Bureau of Elections has received some grant money, and they are requesting that one ballot drop box be permitted and accessed in all 49 municipalities here in Delaware County.
And, and the, I know, I know there's a percentage of individuals in the borough, and probably statewide and nationally, that takes issue with this, but, um, and I, and I've, I've read some opposition to it on the Brookhaven Politics page, for one. But I'm also in receipt of 50-plus emails, as is the rest of council, from our seniors, of all parties, completely. I see it as a nonpartisan matter, so, I'm certainly in favor. I'm, I'm certainly in favor. That being said, if I see any issues with it, if we get a video of somebody putting paper ballots in a shredder, then I'll rip the damn thing out myself. But I see that the use for it in a pandemic and all things considered, I, I think that, that we should go ahead and do it. Any other questions from council? Unmute yourself, Janice.
Can we, can we have the box inside the foyer of the municipal building so that it will be protected, so that at night when nobody is out there, people can't be throwing matches in it or whatever they want to throw in?
Well, keep in mind that every square inch of the outside of the borough is, is, uh, is covered by cameras.
That's not gonna care. If somebody's in a hoodie and all covered up and you don't know who it is.
Well, you're all
Janice, if you put it in there at four-thirty, they won't be able to access the box.
Yeah, you're, you're limiting, you can't leave, you can't leave the foyer open at night and then you're limiting the
I know that. People wouldn't know that. It's only during business hours. It'll be safe.
I'm perfectly, I'm perfectly confident that no one is going, is going to vandalize the box.
Wish I was.
Twenty feet, twenty feet from the police station.
Nobody's there during the night anyway. They're on patrol.
The answer, Janice, to your question is yes, the Borough has discretion wish to place the box immediately inside the municipal building or immediately outside the doors to the
I think you're limiting access, especially to our seniors if you do that. I mean
They're not gonna come out at midnight to, to put their
Surely do, surely do. I've been up there at midnight if people I've been up there at midnight and I've seen seniors come up and mail items. I mean, they're on a different schedule. Most of them are retired. They, you know, they're not nine-to-fiveers. But we can talk about the placement of the box later. That has no bearing, that has no bearing on the vote.
Leanne can't be on the call until seven forty-five.
What? Oh, Leanne.
Did someone?
Leanne, Leanne is coming.
Yes, Mrs. Moore, we're aware that, that Mrs. Kruger's coming on at seven forty-five.
Mr. President, you were correct in that we need not make the decision as to where we're gonna place the box this evening.
Sure, it, it, one has nothing to do with the other. You're gonna, you're gonna approve it either way.
Right, the motion simply
So what is, what is the council's pleasure?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Looks like six oh. With the absence of Mrs. Heller. Thank you, Mr. Wills.
Mr. President, that is my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, I have mentioned several times the twenty-twenty census over the last few months. Another reminder that you only have until September thirtieth to complete the twenty-twenty census. Before, it's quick, it's easy, it's only ten questions, very simple. That's really, your response directs billions and billions of dollars of federal, local funding to local communities like Brookhaven, schools and roads and other public services. If you haven't done so by now, or a census taker hasn't knocked on your door, you can go to wwwtwentytwencensus.gov and complete questionnaire. Again, it only takes a few seconds to do. It's confidential. I think it's something that's the right thing to do. I'm willing to say, kind of echoing some of the comments that I made at the workshop, but I'm sure everybody knows by now that at the council workshop meeting two weeks ago, I announced I was vacating my mayor seat effective September thirtieth. And that was a difficult decision. An announcement for me to make, but I felt it was one of the best things that I and my family needed to do as we venture into a new chapter of our lives. We're only eight and a half miles away, but I wanted to say again, thank you to all the council members, the residents for their support and friendship over the last forty-one years. I will thank you all. And I wish the newly appointed mayor, whoever she or he may be, and the members continued success in community. Be of any service. I'm only a phone call and email away, eight and a half miles, and I'll give you my time and give you my experience, whatever you need. If not, God bless you all. But thank you for all your support over the years. Thank you.
And we'll still let you in the family day.
Thank you. Can I still announce the parade?
Actually, you can.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mike.
Chief Montella.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Good evening, sir.
I have, I have my August twenty-twenty fire report. We had four fire incidents, forty-nine fire, thirty-seven mutual aid calls, three drills, total of eighty-four for the month, four hundred and thirty-three fire and rescue calls so far this year. We had three thousand dollar loss on structure, ten thousand dollar loss on contents for a total of thirteen thousand. We had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of property endangered. For the year, we had one million fifty thousand dollars of property endangered. We had one firefighter injury for the month and we had one civilian injury. Our manpower was eighty-three calls. We have an average of fifteen firefighters responding for nine hundred and thirty-nine hours in service for the month, four thousand nine hundred and eighteen for the year. We had three training sessions, averaged twenty-five firefighters per session, a hundred and seventy-five personnel hours logged for the month, fifteen hundred and seventy-nine training hours for the year. Brookhaven responded to the following incidents in Brookhaven Borough. We had a building fire at seven sixteen Cambridge Road involving a second-floor bedroom with two residents trapped inside the building. Our, the residents were removed from the building by our Assistant Chief Leslie and two police officers on arrival of the fire department. I'll let the Fire Marshal give a little more statement into that fire as far as the investigation. The fire was contained and under control within fifteen minutes. We had a building fire at forty-five forty Marianne Drive, contained to a light fixture in a basement, an accident at the following locations, three fifty-two and Grandview Road, thirty-three hundred block of Edgemont, forty-nine, forty-ninety-eight Edgemont Avenue. We also had an accident. Assisted Chestertown Township Fire Department on a building fire at twelve thirty-five Elson Road, assisted Upland Fire Company at a building fire at Crozier Hospital. We also assisted Rocky Run Fire Company on a building fire at ten eighty-three West Baltimore Pike and a building fire at two seventy-five Glen Rill Road. Assisted the Concordville Fire Company on a building fire at five seventy-eight Smithbridge Road. And our monthly fire training was, we did truck work, opening up roofs and roof saws, high-rise lines, and we had a review of our last two working fires, a critique and a scenario class on the fire itself. Our fire company storm report from the eight four twenty and the eight seven twenty weather events. We responded to twenty-six storm emergencies. We had water rescues at Brookhaven and Bridgewater Road, Lincoln and Dutton Mill Road, Dutton Mill and Creek Road, six seventy Creek Road in Middletown, Incinerator Road and Race Street in Upland Borough and Chapel Hill and Ridley Creek Road in Upper Providence Township. Brookhaven Fire Company members were involved in rescuing four people stranded in high water in trapped vehicles. We also insisted in rescuing another six people from high water as well at the other incidents involving water rescues. Our storm cleanup involved an average of twelve firefighters. We had eighty-eight man-hours of cleanup with the storm events, with an average firefighter donating seven, seven point three-three hours of cleanup time. And under another note, Brookhaven Fire Company was just awarded the AFG Grant, the two thousand nineteen AFG Grant for thirty new, thirty-seven new SCBA's, which ours are coming out of compliance within the next year. So it was good timing on that award and our award from the federal government was two hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and four dollars. And the fire department's share of that grant award is going to be twelve thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-four cents. Our ambulance report for August twenty twenty, we had a hundred and seventy ambulance calls. We had a hundred and seven transports to the hospital, a hundred and five calls dispatched as ALS emergencies, sixty-five BLS emergencies. We had a hundred and fourteen calls in Brookhaven Borough and had fifty-six calls in mutual aid assistance in numerous other towns. Our year-to-date total for ambulance service, we've had eleven hundred and five ambulance calls thus far this year. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Would that be zero positive COVID?
And yes, zero positive COVID we've had for the past, you guys have my report, zero positive COVID transports within the past seven weeks now. Anywhere, we haven't transported anybody.
I, I have no idea how the most congested, non-city region in the country practically is doing so well, but hey, good job, Delco. Thanks, Chief. Good job with all the water issues down there. I was down there on my own ATV. I pushed the car out myself. You guys, you guys are unbelievable down there. I think you need a boat and a couple of ATVs to tell you the truth, so hit Janice up tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
I might have voted to go to Harry's ATV, but I'll definitely vote for ATV for you and the BPD. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. President.
Chief Zedley. Unmute yourself. There you go.
Um, good, yep. All right, for folks, for August twenty twenty, Brooklyn Police were assigned eight hundred and sixteen CAT assignments through DellCom. The noteworthy incidents is that we had are as follows. One aggravated assault that led with an arrest, one arson that had with an arrest, two death investigations, two burglaries, one retail theft that was led with an arrest, one attempted theft, two unauthorized use of automobiles. Both were led to an arrest in that as well. Four criminal mischiefs, one not narcotics arrest, four DUI arrests, four public drunk arrests, two harassment complaints, two terroristic complaints, terroristic threats complaints. One escape resisting arrest incident that led to an arrest as well. One trespassing. The Brookhaven Police investigated nineteen suspicious conditions. They answered sixteen disturbances, which includes domestic disputes. Answered, investigated eighteen alarms. Brookhaven Police also responded to and addressed twenty-two hazardous conditions or assist fire company calls. There was nineteen vehicle accidents, twenty-five assist other departments. One arrest warrant was served. Total for the month, nineteen adults were arrested. One juvenile was arrested, twenty-six citations were issued or filed and twenty-six warnings were issued. The August fourth tropical storm, I want to send a thank you out to officers Martin and Eastman for their hard work. All of us with the Fire Company Highway Department, we just ran the whole day, just responded to call after call. We had a couple protests during the month. They were peaceful and there were no issues. I want to thank the extra officers for coming in, made themselves available to assist. We did establish a presence and ensured the safety of the assembly after indirect suggestive comment was made on social media. Good job to Detective Havich and Officer Barth for recovery of a stolen vehicle, which was one of the unauthorized use of automobiles. Detective Havich was on patrol and had our automatic license plate reader up, up and running, detected a license plate that came back as stolen. Attempted to stop the vehicle, vehicle fled to a dead-end street and ended peacefully. Wouldn't made an arrest. But also excellent work for another incident, Officer Tuttle and Tio Felak. And that's the house fire incident that lent it to the arrest of the intentionally set fire. We also had the, the burglary, one burglary at Prime Tobacco was a smash, smashed the window and grabbed what they could. The suspects have been identified when their crime speed spree culminated and ended in Chester City. They were hitting several businesses throughout numerous counties in the area. District Attorney's Office is taking that that incident over. As far as administrative issues, all officers are utilizing the protective equipment and staying healthy with the COVID nineteen. Current working, currently working with Police Committee to set up interviews for hiring a part-time officers and will be conducting the hiring process in I have addressed a few minor personnel issues during the month of August to improve patrol officer safety and improve relations with the community. Resolve, resolve the personnel issue that occurred before my appointment. As far as training, we had also wet and conduct firearms training and qualifications for officers Subers, Duff, Havich and myself. Four officers are enrolled in September for ends, for end schedule for a four-day training seminar to enhance skills and interviews, field interviews and deception detection. One officer is enrolled and scheduled for active shooter response in October. One officer is enrolled and scheduled for training conducted by the NRA to become rifle development instructor for our department. Purposes of this is to assist in training of our department members and to assist with contingency and span and control issues. In-service training will be conducted in September for use of force, which includes training and certification in taser, pepper spray and baton. De-escalation training is being pushed back because of the COVID concerns until at least November as of now. Also because of COVID, an NRA handgun and shotgun instructor school that I was looking into has been canceled and future classes will be sought. Currently also, trainings are being sought for any and all options related to less than lethal force, use of force options such as use of beanbag, round pepper balls. Purpose of this is have as many layers as possible between in, in our use of force before you get to deadly force, so. As far as community relations, the ice cream event that hits some of the town in a couple of weeks ago was successful, had a lot of fun. We gave ice cream out over a span of a couple of days while, when on patrol, made positive contacts with the community. Right now, there's some other community-related ideas are in the works. And lastly, best wishes to Mayor Hess with his retirement. And that's all, sir.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, sir. Before I go into the council reports, we have state rep Leanne Kruger. Leanne, are you there?
I am. Yep, can you hear me, Terry?
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for allowing me to join you tonight. I wish I could be there in person, Mayor Hess, to congratulate you on your many years of service to our community. Mayor Hess was the, I think, the first elected official I met in Brookhaven when I ran for office the first time in twenty fourteen. And I have so appreciated working alongside you to make sure that Brookhaven was able to get its grant requests fulfilled in Harrisburg, that priority projects were funded and to make sure that we were able to bring as many of our own taxpayer dollars back to the borough as possible. But even more than that, I've appreciated your leadership and your friendship. Mike helped start a group of mayors that now meet as a peer support group that I don't think existed before that. And municipalities that have worked together to share ideas and resources and to to make a better, more efficient use of taxpayer money when, whenever they needed to. So Mike, I will make plans with you to give this to you in person, but I do have an official citation from Harrisburg, and I'd like to read just an excerpt from it. "Whereas the Honorable Michael Hess, Mayor Borough, Mayor of the Borough of Brookhaven, is being honored for more than twenty-six years of distinguished service to the borough, and Mayor Hess served on the Brookhaven Borough Council for fifteen years before being appointed mayor in February of twenty-two thousand and nine. He was elected to his first four-year term in November two thousand and nine and was re-elected in twenty thirteen and twenty seventeen. A resident of the borough for forty-one years, Mayor Hess began his service to the community as a youth sports coach before becoming involved with the Brookhaven Recreation Committee. He founded Brookhaven Family Day, the senior holiday lunches, the annual Halloween haunted house and youth dances. Any definition of a full and productive life must include service to others. Through his many laudable actions and deeds, Mayor Hess has truly proven himself to be an asset to his community and to the Commonwealth." And Mayor Hess, I know that, you know, because of family concerns, you're moving out of the borough, but I want you to know that you will be very messed. Your service to our community won't be forgotten and I hope to continue our friendship, even though you're moving out of Brookhaven to another part of Delaware County. I'm just so grateful for your leadership and everything that you've done to serve the community.
Leanne, thank you for your kind words and thank you for your friendship also. I've told many people already, if you have me, we're staying here, we're coming back, we're still gonna go to the diner, we're still gonna shop at Giant, we're still gonna go to Bryn Mawr's restaurant. Brookhaven's still in my heart. I can't leave what I started. I gotta finish what I started, so there's more work to be done. But I'll be there.
But I'll be there if you need me, Leanne, for any help whatsoever and anybody on council. Thank you again.
Thank you. And thank you Borough Council for allowing me to join your meeting tonight. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Leanne. Thank you again, Mayor.
Congratulations, Mike, again.
Let's go to the council reports. Mr. Vaskus.
Good evening, everyone. Today, August 2020 zoning report I have for you. The zoning hearing board, they met September 8th on a special meeting to appoint a zoning hearing officer because the members of the zoning hearing board all have health issues. They're a little bit of older age and they're not comfortable using Zoom. So I am, I believe that Matt Stone was appointed the hearing officer at the, as a result of that meeting.
Correct.
There, there are no meetings in the foreseeable future as of right now, but that could change. So that's the end of my zoning report. Public Works, August 2020 report. There was some sewage backup, as was mentioned earlier, at 406 Trimble. Bob Grant was notified and, you know, proper paperwork was followed by Catania Engineering. There was a couple of reports of sinkholes, one at 232 Patton Ave, sinkholes under the sidewalk. That's a homeowner issue. We verified a problem at 4450 Marian Drive. We video tested the line. This is a homeowner issue. We checked 3452 Victor Ave. The sinkhole is a homeowner issue. 3437, Victor Ave, there was a sinkhole in the street. I'm sorry, I actually don't have a street name for that one. But Mr. Catania, I believe he has that on his list to be fixed in the future. Sorry about that. We had a issue on Whitley Road, which we had an emergency call out to Cleaver Construction. A road plate was placed down and I believe Mr. Catania will touch about that more in his report. We checked the storm sewer on 3544 Edgewater. No issues were found. And we had Cleaver Construction complete to stormworks, I'm sorry, storm sewer inlets on Edgemont Avenue that were in need of repair. Onto the parks. We had some picnic, picnic benches that had some graffiti on them at Eaton. They were sanded, painted and placed back into the parks. I just received word today, though, that they have already been tagged already by some graffiti.
Revandalized today. Yeah.
Yes.
Great, great job. And they will be, they will be repainted tomorrow.
Yes, they will be. And I don't know if, they said they possibly saw somebody on camera, but I'm not, I don't know where we can go from that. I don't think there was any verification or not. We had new mulch installed in the fall zone at the playground at Eaton. Security cameras and equipment were ordered for Memorial and Sampson Park by M2. They get the grass cutting of all the parks and ball fields are continuously going. We had 17 new street designation signs placed in the borough. All ones that needed to be replaced as they were either in disrepair or hard to be, be invisible. We have four new traffic safety signs that were installed. We went around the borough cleaning storm sewer drains. Around 750 pounds of debris has been removed just for this month. As of right now, this month, there was 33 PA one call tickets. Year-to-date is 533. I'm happy to report there's no injuries or accidents for the month of August. And three employees have completed the two-hour training certificate for swift water awareness. And I wanted to announce that the 2020 leaf collection is a go for the borough. We found a way to dispose the leaves this year. So I just wanted to make, make sure everybody was aware of that. And that, that'll be the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Oh, are we advertising for the seasonal employee to assist?
Yes, I did forget.
It's okay.
We, I want to make a motion to post an advertisement. I need to get something in writing to make it formal. But I'd like to make a motion to advertise for two employees for, on a temporary basis. One, we're going to do, I guess we'll put this in, in either, I forgot the name of the newspaper we use.
The Spirit.
The Spirit. And one employee, there's going to be two employees, one for November, December for the leaf collection. And the second one, I believe we're looking for January to possibly March for snow removal.
For plowing. And, and let us, let us, council should be aware and the public should be aware that it's not, they're not going to be permanent employees.
No, this is on a temporary basis.
Yeah, we ran into the situation prior where we hired seasonal employees and, you know, they weren't quite seasonal, put it that way. So these are temporary employees.
I also tried to reach out to the Union Hall that the Public Works is affiliated with. They do not have any employees at standby to be called in for temporary work of this nature. So this is the route we would have to go to proceed with this.
Sure, we can put that in a spirit. I think we'll do probably better putting it on the Facebook pages, maybe get a couple of local kids or something.
Yeah, that might not be a bad idea at all.
So do I have a motion to, motion to approve the advertisement for two seasonal employees with the details that Mr. Vaskus just provided? All right, we'll call Mrs. Fuchs. You take the second.
Hi.
Hi.
We heard that, Janice. Now you're back on mute. Anything else, Mr. Vaskus?
No, that is the end of my report. Thank you.
All right, Janice, unmute yourself. You're up.
All right, is it my turn? Thank you very much. Okay, we do have some bills to pay tonight. And for September, the general fund total is $185,432.46. The road fund is $594.75. And the sewer fund is $11,539.52. Program total, $197,566.73 for September. So I'm making a motion that we pay the bills today.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Questions carried.
Okay, now the, the important thing I have to do tonight is every year in September, we have financial requirement and minimum municipal obligation or MMOs, which is what Harrisburg calls them. It's for the budget for 2021. For our non-uniform pension plan, people who are employees such as Mary and others, Harry. Next year's is $28,162. So we need a motion for that. We have to fill it out, I had to fill out the form, send it in, and then Harrisburg and the pension companies know what it is because they, they calculated the numbers and they told us what they need us to have. So there's enough money in the pension that when the pensions are given out monthly, there's enough money to follow up. So.
So what is, what is the, so what's the exact motion to?
The motion is to.
For funding purposes?
Well, you're approving the MMO for 2021 for non-uniform pension.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm sorry, I missed.
Do we have to approve it every year before the budget? Because then this goes to Harrisburg and they know how much we're putting in next year so the actuary can do his work.
Yeah, I missed the first part.
Yeah, they do, they do this every year. We always have to do it at September council meeting.
Okay.
It's, it's for Harrisburg. So it's $28,162 for non-uniform pension, the non-uniform pension fund. So that's people that are not police, but have a pension. So I'm going to make the motion and if somebody can second it, it would be great.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, then the last one I have is for the police pension fund. So the MMO for that is $320,196. That's because we have so many people on receiving pensions from the borough, quite a few. And every time somebody goes out, it gets higher. So, so it's $320,196. Trust me, it's a lot more than whatever you, I'll make the motion and.
Who wants the second?
I'll second it.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Questions carried.
That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice.
You're welcome.
Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just an update, we will be having our shredded event on Saturday, October 24th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon at the Borough Hall parking lot. We will not be having the electronics. That is canceled until further notice.
Is there, is there a limit on how much you can bring for shredding? Okay, thank you.
And I am working on dates for 2021. I did reach out to Wiggins today.
Oh, great. Thank you.
We will have a fire committee meeting on Wednesday night, September 16th at 6:30 at the firehouse with our masks and social distancing.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, I have Delaware County is requesting funding to support the $40 million emergency communication system. They would like support from the first responders. Members of the business community and residents are invited to send a letter of support. This grant will fund a comprehensive public safety project that will enable radio signals to consistently reach the responders and emergency service providers, secure new dedicated and secure public safety radio channels, connect first responders in real time with local businesses, hospitals, schools and universities to ensure that they have direct access during a disaster. Also, they will support emergency dispatchers, law enforcement officers and the paid and volunteered first responders who protect the community. I will have this up on the website and social media. Donna, if you could get that out there for me, because there is, there is a link where you can, they give you a letter, a sample letter that you can copy and paste and then send, you know, send it in. So they do need all the support that they can get so that they can get funded for this project. Also, at the workshop, I did thank the fire department, the police department, Public Works and emergency management for their outstanding efforts during the two back-to-back storms that we had. Thank you again for all your hard work and dedication. Mayor Hess, I would like to thank you for everything you have done for the borough throughout your years of service. I wish you and your family the best. That's the end of my report. Everybody stay safe and well. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Mr. Pappas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, my, my meetings for the, for the month did not take place, so I don't have any type of report. But I do want to thank the mayor again for the past, my history with the police department. He was very good in the police department. Michael, good luck in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Heller is absent. Mrs. Fuchs.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I wanted to begin my report by thanking the borough and our residents for everyone's prayers and support during a very difficult time for myself and my family. John was proud to be a resident of the borough and he will be missed by so many. Thank you all again so much for your care and your concern. So ordinance committee report. The ordinance committee will meet this Thursday to again discuss the food truck ordinance. Council received via email the welcome packet we've been working on for our new residents. We've been working on it for the last, I don't know, four months or so. Thanks to Mimi McGovern, she was a big part of that welcome packet. So if you haven't done so already, please review and let me know if you have any changes to the packet. I would like to finalize it by the end of the month and get some copies made for our office and then put it out electronically as well. Business revitalization news, as everyone can see, Duncan's construction is well underway. We also have a new bakery in town. It's called the West Branch, the West Branch Baking Company. They are located in the Avenue Mall where the Green Ollings are and will hopefully be open soon for business. Tech committee news. So everyone has received the ECODE proposal on September 8th, and I hope you all had a chance to review it. The tech committee would like to move forward with it. So if you have it in front of you, it would be page eight, page six and page eight. So there's a few different fees that this proposal has. So Hector, I know you and I are on the same page and I'm sure Sherry is as well. So there's a conversion project price of $1,763. And as you can see from the, the handout that you all have, it does include quite a few things. You know, we've all looked at it online, towns that use ECODE 360 and it's phenomenal on the websites. It's very easy to use. The residents appreciate the simplicity of it where they can find any ordinance that they're looking for. There's a great search feature in it. So that if we move with ECODE 360, that will cost us $1,763. And then every year thereafter, $1,195 annual fee. So Hector, is there anything that you, you wanted to piggyback on regarding this ECODE 360?
Yes, so I just wanted to, you know, this is going to completely simplify everything we have when it comes to zoning ordinance. Literally, you go to the website, there's a search bar. Say you type in garage, everything associated with that word garage will pop up. You know, dimensions, what zone you're in, everything possible. So this will really clear up a lot. And hopefully it could help decrease some of the phone calls that Harold receives and, you know, take some of the workload off of him. And the resident can kind of, you know, do a little bit of homework themselves. So I, I think it's a great thing and it would definitely help put Brookhaven, you know, in the, in the, in the process of moving forward to the digital age where we don't have to, you know, rely on people and, you know, books.
It's longer to do, in my opinion, longer.
Yes, I agree.
Money well spent. That's for sure.
That's all I have to add. It, it's for zoning and, and for ordinances and literally you type it in and it's very simplistic.
And that, that does require a motion to move forward.
Yes, it does.
I do have questions, people.
Go ahead. We weren't going to leave you locked out.
No, I know you were. I.
Janice, let me ask you this. Did you look at the?
I looked at everything and I have sufficient questions. I need to talk to Mr. Wills because there are legal questions. And Mr. Wills, can you listen to me or hear me? Okay. Here's the question. In 1978, we received codification. We've had two companies and we've been working with them for almost 40 years. And we've paid probably more than $50,000 for all the work they've done. The documents you have right now, the codification we have is from that company. I don't know if you can just lift it and give it to another company without having to pay something or, I don't know if that was ever changed.
We're not under contract with that company, correct?
Wish we are. We're under contract and we pay them licensing fees. And we've paid over $40,000 in the last 40 years.
Okay, well, you didn't say.
We were under contract with them.
Yes, we are. We have, we have been for 40 years. I was, I was president when we put this one in and we use it and I've seen it on.
Wouldn't that contract, wouldn't, wouldn't that contract renew every year? I have no recollection.
It does renew every year.
Then I don't think we should renew it again because I think, I don't think it's.
I know, one, one at a time. Can I, let me get it. I don't work, I don't recall a motion to renew the contract annually and I've been here for two and a half.
It's, it's, it's a license. We, it happens automatically because we've been working with them for 40 years. They're the ones that put it together. You just can't lift it and give it to another company.
I'm not second guessing you, but I don't think there's a contract. But Mr. Wills can, Mr. Wills can look into that tomorrow. I.
That's fine. I was bringing it to your attention because I didn't think when I wrote all this, you realized.
All right, so let's, so Mr. Wills, could you answer Janice's question regarding the?
If, if we have an agreement with an existing company, it is in all probability a year-to-year agreement that automatically renews itself. I'll suggest contact the existing company and indicate by the end of the calendar year, December 31st of 2020, company and indicate by the end of the calendar year, December 31st of 2020, we wish to sever our relationship with this company. Again, I would highly recommend that we consider a motion that we go and establish a relationship with Ecode. They have relationships with most of the 49 municipalities here in Delaware County. I have worked with Ecode in the past, and they are phenomenal to work with. I would highly recommend that we engage them in this project effective ASAP.
Okay. So Janice, you're, you're okay moving forward with the stipulation that we sever, that we terminate the contract on 12/31/20 with, with the current company, whatever the name of that company is, correct?
I just want to make sure.
Any issues otherwise?
As long as we do it legally, because I don't know what we're responsible for. Because you're giving a whole book of documents that were prepared by the other company to a new company. And I don't know if we're going to get into trouble legally if we do that. That's why.
I'm no Jay, I'm no Jay Wills. My thought would be if we paid for it, it's, it's a proprietary product.
That's why I want to make sure that there's no.
Mr. Wills can find that out for us.
Thank you.
So Donna, give us, give us your motion and, well, to move forward with Ecode contingent upon terminating the current contract, or the contract on 12/31/20 with the current company that does our codification. So that would be your motion.
Yeah, that's my motion, to terminate the current contract effective December 31st, 2020, and to move forward with Ecode 360, January 1st, 2021.
Fantastic. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Are there any further questions? Thank you, Janice.
Thank you.
Good, good questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Thank you for your work on that, Mrs. Fuchs.
Thank you. So continuing my report, Sherry and myself have met with Vaughn and the parade committee regarding our upcoming parade, and we are having it this year. Due to COVID-19, it will be scaled back, and there will be some changes to the format. But I'm sure Mr. Donaway during the next, unless you want to talk now, Mr. Donaway, regarding the parade, you know, I just wanted to put it out there that we were still going to have one this year. We weren't going to cancel it. So Mr. Donaway, do you want to wait until a public discussion, or you want to talk about it briefly now?
No, we, we can talk about it right now. We, it's going to be a scaled-down version of what we normally do. It won't be the same kind of production. We talked about doing away with the grandstand because we don't want people gathering. But I think the feeling across the board was that it's been a long year for everybody, and this would be some kind of a break if we were able to put some kind of a parade together. And what we found out was when we sent our invitations out, a number of people said they would like to be there. So we're still working on that list, and there's some other people that we're reaching out to in the meantime. For anybody who wants to join our meetings, we do meet at the Borough Hall. The next meeting will be October 14th at 7:30 p.m. Anything else that you can think of?
Just that we're not going to do judging the same way that we normally have.
Oh, that's a great idea.
I didn't know if you wanted to talk about that tonight or not.
Oh, yeah, I, you know.
Yeah, well, let's just say we may do the judging a little bit, but we're still putting details on that together. But as the details come together, we'll keep the council informed, we'll keep the public informed. I'm looking forward to it. I'm excited. And I think most of the people in the room were. And so we're going to push forward with some kind of a parade. Sounds like the council's behind it, from my understanding. It doesn't seem to be a problem that way.
It sounds like, yeah, all the council is behind it. Absolutely. Thank you for your work.
So, all right.
Thank you.
I wanted to end my report by wishing the mayor well, thanking the mayor for his hard work and dedication throughout the years. And I hope that you're happy in your new home and in your new neighborhood. And I know that you won't be a stranger to Brookhaven Borough in the future. So thank you again, Mayor Hess. So my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Fuchs. Mr. Catania?
Thank you. I submitted my written report. I'm just going to go over some of the highlights for council consideration. For Brookhaven Storage, we have two items. The first item is to set the escrow amount in the amount of $337,231.95. Ask for a motion for that.
I have a motion.
I'll make the motion. Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Carrie.
The second item for Brookhaven Storage is the authorization for the secretary to execute, it's called PennDOT Form N950. It's a standard form that's used for the developer to submit an application for a highway occupancy permit as part of the project.
So moved. Jenny, a motion?
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries.
Annual maintenance contracts. Bids for the annual maintenance contract for the street and store maintenance contracts were received via PennBit, an online bidding service. We received four bids. Going to recommend award to the, for the Storm and Sanitary Store Maintenance to ADU Services Incorporated at their bid amounts with a secondary contract to be awarded to More Construction Services, who was the second bidder. Ask for a motion for that.
Anyone?
I'll make the motion. Second? Anyone?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Aye.
And then for street maintenance, I'm going to recommend award to More Construction Services at their bid unit prices with a secondary contract to AF Damon Company.
What's the motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All jumping at once. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just have a clarification question for Mr. Catania about storage? Was that a letter of credit or cash for that escrow? Letter of credit?
This is, this is simply saying the escrow amount. Those details will be worked out between Mr. Wills and, and developer.
Okay, that's fine. I wasn't sure. I was going to tell Delilah which one it was. That's fine. Thank you.
I have a 4340 Marianne Drive. This is a sinkhole in a rear yard that the Public Works have video. I had it as seeking authorization to repair, but I think I heard Mr. Vasquez says that the Public Works checked that, and it was a private matter.
Probably.
Bear with me one second, then I.
If it's in somebody's house, it can't be.
You're muted.
That was 4450, right?
This was 4340.
4340.
43. No, I do not have a 4340.
Well, I'll tell you what, then. How about, how about if I seek authorization to repair that subject to confirmation with the Public Works Department?
Okay.
There you go. That's fine by me. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
There you go. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
She carries.
So cool.
Traffic signal maintenance contract. This is an annual contract, our three-year contract with Charles A. Higgins and Sons for the maintenance of our traffic signals that's set to expire on December 31st of this year. The current contract has an option for additional one-year periods with the mutual consent of both parties. The contract amount is $2,740, and I think I would recommend accepting that one-year extension.
I have one question for you.
Go ahead, Mr. Vasquez. I have a question also.
Do we have any, has anybody else been interested in possibly taking over this contract?
Not with that price.
Or do we need to go out for bids for that?
Well, it's, 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 to me, it's under the bidding threshold, so we could, we could get three written proposals in lieu of putting out a public bid.
I, I would, I would, I would suggest getting proposals.
All right, we'll do that.
Yes, I also.
If you're, if you're not happy with, with the work that a company does, why continue?
And I would ask that, that council authorize the, the solicitation for written proposals for the traffic signal maintenance contract?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. The 2020 PA Small Water and Sewer Grant, the borough received notice that they receive funding for the Charles Avenue Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation. They asked for authorization for the borough secretary and related officials to execute the grant documents.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie.
And then finally, I have a PennDOT Master Caster Agreement. This is a standard agreement that PennDOT puts out. It's, it's a long-term, this year, this time, it's a long-term agreement. Anytime PennDOT's doing work, such as repaving a state road, this coordinates the, the adjustment of the borough sewer facilities, basically the sanitary and storm sewer manholes in the streets. I'm going to ask for authorization to execute that agreement.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's Jerry. It's the castor.
And that's all I have.
We have it always.
Thank you, sir.
It's for state highways.
I have, I have a request from the Rec Board President, I'm sorry, the Rec Board Vice President, Mike Garvey, for a donation from the borough to the Truck or Treat Program in the amount of $500 to purchase candy. The reason being is that fundraising, it's, it's obviously a down year for fundraising. You can't just go asking businesses for donations and for obvious reasons, because of the pandemic. You don't know which businesses are hurt, and they didn't feel all that comfortable soliciting for donations. So if council's okay with that, I spoke to Mrs. Sawicki about it before the meeting. The request came in late this afternoon. If council's okay with that, we will donate $500 for the purchase of candy for the Truck or Treat Program to the Rec Board.
Do you need a motion for that, or?
You don't need a motion for that.
Okay.
Okay, I'm fine with it.
I think it's a good idea. I think it's a very good.
It's one of the best, one of the best events in the borough. It's very popular. And they are going to have a modified version of it this year, which.
At least the kids won't go without something.
A drive-through.
Drive-through. That's a good idea.
Yeah.
I meant to talk, speak of 701 Marshall. We already talked about that. Mr. Vasquez covered the advertisement for the seasonal workers. Now, this will be for Ms. Sawicki and Mr. Vasquez regarding the purchase of the bucket truck. Explain to council and the public what we're doing there, if you would. Hector?
Okay, so, in, with myself, myself, Janice, Mr. Catania, and Dave, we met, you know, discussing some matters, you know, for the Public Works Department. They were supposed to purchase a new truck this year. So, and we also were exploring the possible options of buying a tow behind trailer that, you know, had a.
A high reach.
A high-reach option. And, you know, after talking with Dave and Mr. Catania, I, it's, it's along my reasoning that I think we would be okay if we were to purchase a truck that could do both. So not only will we still get the utility that the pickup truck would have, so they'll still be able to carry tools, ladders, and other things, but they also have the bucket option when needed. So this will, this will help with safety. So we're not climbing on ladders, attempting to, you know, cut down limbs on trees, or we're not reaching out to contractors to, you know, trim brushes and branches of trees that have fallen and stuff. So this will be a savings in some areas for the borough.
And my, and my banners to hear about.
Yes, and, and the banner project. This also will help with that. So it's my strong feeling that the bucket truck would be a great addition to our fleet with Public Works. So I kind of wanted to see what everybody on council's opinion was on this.
Well, you know, my opinion, it's going to, it's going to give us some savings as far as hiring contractors goes for some tree work, banner work, and other work. It's budget neutral. It's sort of reallocated, was reallocated from something that was previously approved, so I don't have any issues with it. I desperately, I desperately need it for the banner promo. We're behind on, on maintenance.
Kind of to give you a rough idea of where we're at price-wise, I believe a new truck and the utility body to be reused from the other truck was around $40,000 to $50,000. I don't have the solid numbers in front of me at this time. And then the possible trailer that we were looking into was anywhere from $20,000 to possibly $30,000. So you're looking around $70,000.
Okay.
With, with two, with two items. Now, we could combine those two items, and I think you can even get a brand-new one for around $80,000. I don't know if we'll go the route of brand-new or used. We still have to discuss that. But I just wanted to let everybody know that this is the route I believe we should go in. If anybody has any, you know, opinions, I'd like to hear them now.
I'm fine with it.
Any points from council?
Is this the, the tow behind that we're going to use indoors?
No. Where that, that would be eliminated, and we would have the bucket truck itself. So this would eliminate the pickup truck and the tow behind and combine it into one unit. I think we'll have more, more overall use than just a small tow behind that can be accessible indoors to change a few light bulbs.
Any other questions from council?
Do you know when you'll have delivery?
Can we get it tomorrow? I'm that far behind on banners. I need.
You have to go after bids, aren't you?
I know.
I'll have to, I'll, I'll reach out with Dave, Janice, and get you.
Okay, that's, that's great, Hector.
Thank you, Hector. I have one more quick item regarding these Zoom meetings. We're, we're going to do a bit of an experiment for the swearing-in of the new mayor, and we are going to attempt to hold that in the gym when that should happen, which would be sometime in October. Mayor Hess officially leaving us 9:30, so we'll have till 10:30 to swear in the new mayor. That will most likely be held in the gym with proper social distancing, and we will record it with the camera that we use.
Isn't that smart?
Our in-person meetings. And if that is successful, maybe we can kind of pry council, apply council to attempt the meeting or the workshop after that in the gym. Also, I need a motion to approve the July 2020 council workshop minutes.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Need a motion to approve the August 2020 council meeting minutes.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Carrie. And a motion to approve the August 2020 council workshop minutes.
Make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Carrie, thank you. That's all I have. Mr. Leslie? Unmute yourself, please.
Got you, brother. Just a couple things. Going to order just a small amount of fire prevention material by the end of this week. We've abandoned Christian Academy. It's still going. They are in school, and we advise, it won't be a very big order, Janice, as of prior years. And one thing, we had that 716 Cambridge Road house fire over there. And like the police chief said, the man was arrested for setting his sister's house on fire. Thank you, chief, and good luck, mayor. Going to miss you.
Thanks a lot, Charlie.
Chuck, I do, Charlie, I have a question.
Yep.
Do you think when we do the drive-by for the candy, we could give out the fire paperwork, you know, a coloring book, or whatever you're going to do, and maybe give it out at the same time to the children?
Sure we can.
Because they will be Brookhaven kids.
Yep, we can hand it out that day also, Gass.
Okay, well, I just thought maybe it would be nice because they'll have something to do at home.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
I've got enough material to hand out that day. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Oh, I should, I should add. I forgot one item. Mayor Hess's last day with us would be 9:30. So we will be accepting applications until, I guess, until that day. Jay, is that, is that okay with you? We can presently accept them even though the resignation hasn't taken place, right, and cut it off on the day of his official resignation?
Yes, in light of the mayor's announcement that he intends to retire effective September 30th, certainly encourage and invite any interested citizens who may wish to be appointed to the office of mayor to submit a letter of interest as well as a resume to borough council, and we can do a cut. And we can do a cutoff date of September 30th. At that point, council would have an opportunity to review those particular applications. If they wish to conduct oral interviews, Borough Council certainly may do so, although they are not obligated to do so. And again, under the Borough Code, the council would have 30 days from the date of the effective date of Mayor Hess's resignation to appoint a successor. So assuming it is the mayor's intention to resign effective September 30th, Borough Council would need to hold a, a public meeting on or before October 30th in which to fill that vacancy. I can briefly advise the council and the public that there are some minimal eligibility requirements to be appointed to the position of mayor and they are as follows. Number one, of course, all candidates have to have resided continuously in the borough for a minimal period of one year. Two, all candidates for the office of mayor must be a registered voter. And number three, all candidates for mayor must be free of any felony criminal convictions. So they are basically the minimal requirements that the Borough Code sets for eligibility for the office of mayor.
Thank you, sir. We did post it on Facebook. I will post reminders on Facebook. We, we put all the, all the requirements in. We do have two applications in so far, surprisingly well, but we're still two weeks up. Thank you, Jack. Anyone for public discussion? Please unmute yourself. Going once for public discussion. Going twice.
Yeah, Mr. President?
Go away.
I, yes, I, I saw on Facebook where Mike, Mike Greek has been keeping people up on CWA and.
He's done a great job with it too. Yep.
Yes, yes, he has. And there appears to be pending legislation for a voter referendum coming up. And what I suggest to the council and to the public is to keep pressure on the local state officials that it goes that route. And that, you know, it, I don't know how binding that voter reg, that referendum is, but it should come, in my mind, should become before the rate players that are paying the bills there. And the other thing, I just wanted to clear something up. I, I didn't understand the zoning hearing officer being Matt Stone. Is Harold Hampton still in the job?
That's why.
This is not a. Harold Hampton still holds that job, yes.
Okay, and what, and what's Matt's role? I'm just curious.
All right, so to clear this up for you.
Go ahead, Hector.
So basically, everybody on the zoning hearing board is.
Obscenary.
And they're, and they're not of good health. So instead of meeting in person, Matt Stone will be meeting there and conveying the information to the members in their stead.
Okay.
Because they are, they are not comfortable with Zoom meetings and their abilities to properly attend them.
And nor do they, nor do they wish to meet in person.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, there's been, no, Harold is in his, in his, is his role. He holds his role.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else for public discussion?
Just, just everybody's clear. The Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code that basically regulates zoning hearing boards permits the zoning members, if they wish to designate or appoint a hearing officer to obviously listen to the particular application, make findings of fact, conclusions of law and issue opinions and decisions on its behalf. So what the zoning hearing board has recently done fully comports with the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code. Although the hearing officer does not necessarily have to be an attorney, it is certainly preferable that an attorney be appointed. Mr. Stone, of course, is a member of the Delaware County and Pennsylvania Bars and is mentally qualified to serve as a hearing officer.
Sure, and Hector covered this in, in his council report.
Have a better understanding of it, but is that a paying position?
He will be compensated. That is correct. Just the zoning hearing board members are also compensated.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have an issue with Matt Stone filling in temporarily?
Oh, no, I didn't understand it. And I just wanted a better understanding of what, what you were doing.
Okay. Anyone else for public discussion? All right, public discussion is closed. In closing, I just want to say thank you to Mayor Hess. Mayor Hess was, I believe, the one that got me involved, created this monster. So I appreciate that. I appreciate your faith. I appreciate working with you. I know you have us for one more council workshop, but we, we recognize and appreciate everything you did. And we enjoy working with you.
Thank you.
Most days. I know you always enjoyed working with me without, without any hiccups, correct? So, thank you.
I, I always wake up hoping I'm talking to you.
Thank you, thank you again, sir. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
See you in two weeks.